Open the Monday, February the fifteenth, 2021, 3:00 PM meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. As we generally do, we open with an invocation. Commissioner Rushing, would you lead us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Join me if you'd like. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here to do the business of the people of Union County. Normally, Heavenly Father, we ask for rain, and today I would like to ask for some good weather. We sure could use some nice weather for a while. We pray that you would be with us as we make decisions for the county and taxpayers here in the county, and we pray that you would be home with us safely as we go home. In your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America, in the chief of the republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Each month, we have the opportunity to recognize our employees for their service they've provided Union County, and I'd like to start with Stephanie Bernard with Social Services with five years, Angela Cherry, Social Services, five years, Michael Deanat with Sheriff's Office was ten years, and Cynthia Smith with Health with thirty years. In February, we had retirements of Ray Green in Transportation with fifteen years, Patricia Van Arsdale with Social Services with twenty years, and William Tracy Henry with Community Support and Outreach with twenty-eight years. Again, we want to thank these employees for the services they've provided to Union County. Next, we have the opportunity to recognize those that were caught in the act, and Ms. Cooper, if you'll come describe that program, please, ma'am.
I'm happy to. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. The management team continues to make a priority of celebrating our employees' extraordinary accomplishments and bolstering our employee recognition program. So I'm excited to briefly share with you a few updates to our program and some of the ways that we are recognizing our employees. Caught in the Act is the name of our employee recognition program. Employees are encouraged to nominate their colleagues when they catch them going above and beyond their daily job responsibilities. The individual Caught in the Act Award is awarded four times a year. It's always a surprise presentation, so that's a fun thing to be a part of. The four pictures you see include the five recipients of the Caught in the Act Award from 2020. Recipients of Caught in the Act Award receive a monetary reward, and they are recognized internally throughout the organization and externally to our greater community. Something that we would like to do going forward is now, every time we have a Caught in the Act Award recipient, bring them for recognition in front of the board as well. Couple of new awards that are a testament to the management team continuing to make employee recognition a priority. We have two new awards. The first is the Caught in the Act Team Award. We recognize that with some of the submissions and the nominations we were receiving, there were some really good submissions for teams. And so the management team awarded the very first Caught in the Act Team Award just last week to these six human services employees who helped tremendously, particularly throughout the pandemic, helping public communications translate vital website content, social media posts, graphic, offering radio interviews in Spanish, so that we were making a concerted effort to provide this very critical information to our Spanish-speaking residents. Recipients of the Caught in the Act Team Award are also going to be recognized internally and externally. They receive two paid vacation days, and they'll also be recognized annually going forward with being recognized at a Board of Commissioners meeting. The second new award we are adding is the Lifesaver Award. We, again, realize with some of the nominations we are receiving through Caught in the Act that we have a lot of very dedicated, trained employees who happen to be in the right place at the right time and have saved lives, and felt that that was deserving of a special award called the Lifesaver Award. So those awards will be given as those nominations are received and reviewed, and those recipients will receive a monetary reward and additionally, of course, be recognized internally and externally and here at the Board of Commissioners meetings. So normally, we do the Caught in the Act of the Year presentation at the Employee Expo, which we had to change last year because of COVID and it being canceled. So going forward, we would like to do that annually at a board meeting, but this year is a little bit different. In an effort to show you guys some of the great things that these five recipients last year did, we put together this short video, and so I will share that with you guys. And then after that, the five recipients of the Caught in the Acts of last year will join the management team, who will award the Caught in the Act of the Year for 2020.
My name is Deputy Tiffany Hill. I am a School Resource Officer at Fairview Elementary and Porter Ridge Elementary School.
Jamie Hargit, I'm a crew leader with Sewer Department in Union County.
My name is John Helms, I'm with the Assistant Fire Marshal with the Fire Marshal's Office here in Union County.
And I'm Zeb Miles, I'm also Assistant Fire Marshal here in Union County.
My name is Deputy AJ Wallace, Jr. Of course, I work for the Union County Sheriff's Office, and I'm a School Resource Officer for Wingate and Marshall Elementary Schools.
I believe it was this past summer, I was actually on patrol, and there was a call that came out to a home that I had been to before with a young person that I was familiar with from an interaction I'd had at a different school, but yet still was an interaction I had with a student. And so knowing that I knew that student and what he was going through, I decided to go to that call and see if I could talk with him, see what was going on, and see if we could get him any type of help that he needed. We got the school counselor involved, even though it was summertime, school was out, we still had the staff that was there and caring enough to talk with that child as well. So I got involved that way because I knew who she was, and she called me, and we were able to get him the help that he needed that day.
Tiffany truly does love the public. She loves everyone that she serves, no matter what the situation is that they're in. She's very, very dedicated to serving everyone. When you think of a servant's heart, she definitely is that definition.
There was an issue on an outfall, and we were out there doing some investigation, and I found a customer-side sewer line that was running, stubbed off into the creek under a bridge, and so I had to get in touch with the people and try to get that taken care of as quickly as possible.
Jamie usually goes above and beyond. He's real thorough with the customers. He always usually puts himself in other people's shoes, the situations that goes hand-in-hand in what we do every day.
So last year, we were delivering COVID supplies at the very beginning of the COVID pandemic, and we come, we were at a nursing home, when we were alerted to a cardiac arrest that they were working in the back. We entered the building and assisted the nurses on scene with CPR until the fire department and EMS arrived.
Zeb and John are truly, they're servants. They put the people around them ahead of themselves at every opportunity. I'm proud that they're a part of the Fire Marshal's Office team. I'm exceptionally proud that they're part of our Union County family. It was the first day of school. Due to COVID in March, the school was shut down, and of course, I miss my kids when I'm not with them, and so I was very excited. The first day of school, I was in the cafeteria greeting the students and noticed that one of the students appeared to be in distress. As I looked and I saw that he looked like he was choking, I started doing the Heimlich, got him in a good position, ten to twelve thrust, and a piece of pair came out, which was kind of weird that the Saturday prior, I had my research for CPR.
And Deputy Wallace, he just, he steps in those roles and just is a great person to have in this position. He truly does love the students that he works with and the teachers that he protects, and he takes his job very, very serious. So when a situation, like I said, came to that, it was a fluid motion for him, no hesitation, no thinking, what do I do, who do I call? And, you know, Superman was there at the right time. And this is home, and there's nothing like serving home. So the fact that home recognizes us for sacrifices we make or things that we do or for the training that we've put ourselves through, and we try to incorporate every day, just even on the law enforcement side, I think it's great. And I know they do that for other departments in the county, and it just shows a lot of appreciation. And Union County is a great place to live and work, raise a family. I mean, that's just what it's all about.
So with that, I will invite the five recipients of the Caught in the Act Award for 2020 to join the management team for the presentation. As the five recipients of 2020 make their way up, I want to briefly introduce Brent Ayers. He's new to Public Communications. He is new to Union County from California. He is our branch manager, but it's the first time that you're seeing Brent. He's going to take the picture, so I just wanted to make sure I introduced him.
Yes, I came from California, but I'm originally from North Carolina.
Yes. Before the presentation, we're going to get one picture of the group before we turn it over to Mark. Can you squeeze in some more? Try to squeeze in a little bit.
Squeeze in a little bit. Here we go. And three, two, one, one more, three, two. Three, two, one.
I want to tell you how proud I am of this group right here. You know, it's true, Union County is a special place to live, it is a special place to work. I think everybody that works with Union County would agree, the number-one thing that we all have in common is that we serve the residents of Union County. Now, each of us has a job to do, and we come to work, and we do it to the best of our ability every day. But this Caught in the Act program really is about recognizing those individuals who have stepped out, put themselves, in some cases, in harm's way, or stepped out of their comfort zone to do something special for somebody else that really impacts somebody else's life and makes that special contribution to Union County, to the citizens of Union County. I couldn't be more proud of all of our employees, but especially of these employees that we have with us today. So I personally, I think they deserve a big old round of applause. I don't know. So, as Liz Cooper said a minute ago, usually we do this at the Employee Expo in the fall of every year, and COVID just kind of like, you know, changed those plans for us this year, so we thought about how in the world could we do this that in a meaningful way, because this is a special time, these are special people, and they deserve to be recognized for their leadership in this community. So we decided to bring them in today to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. So it's my distinct honor and privilege to award this year's annual Caught in the Act Award to Deputy Tiffany Hill. I will tell you that Tiffany is way too modest in her film about what took place. Many of y'all know that Union County, in collaboration with Union County Public Schools, has a behavioral health program. Michelle Lancaster, our Deputy County Manager, played a big role in making sure that that program was put in place and it works. And many of y'all know, when, I think it was, school shootings took place in Florida, you know, the first time we had Columbine, and school shootings, and the reaction to most school systems was, now we've got to increase security, and you put the security doors up, and you add resource officers and things like that, and Union County made those investments. Union County Public Schools put those in place, and this community had taken those steps. And the Florida shootings occurred, and so the question becomes, you know, we've already taken those steps, what more can we do from that standpoint? And then the school system really told us that, you know, the impact, we didn't have enough resources on the behavioral health side to help those kids that were struggling every day and reach them before bad decisions get made. And so an investment was made there, and it's had a tremendous impact on the students and schools across our county, and Deputy Hill's been a big part of that. She knows what that's all about, as evidenced by the actions that she took. She knew where those resources were and how to access them, and she obviously has a heart for the people that she comes in contact with, and she thought enough about getting involved in that situation, and she took those resources that were available, and she put them together with a difficult situation that had a good outcome at the end of the day. And that's what it's all about, is making a difference in somebody else's life so that at the end of the day, they can move on, make better decisions, and have a better quality of life. And we appreciate everything that you did in that situation. We appreciate everything that all of y'all have done, but that is, these are the kind of people that we have working in Union County, and I think that we can all be proud where we live. So congratulations again, and thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Tiffany and the management team and Chair.
Let me get one on the phone, just for good measure. Here we go. Three, two, and one. Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to say thank you for taking time out of your meeting to allow us to do that. I'm very sincere when I say we have good people working in Union County. And I think you, I think that, you know, the film you saw, just as a small tidbit of the good things that occur every day in this organization, and I'm glad that you had the opportunity to see that today, and I appreciate the opportunity to present that award.
Well, Mr. Manager, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in recognizing our employees, and we look forward to the next opportunity. Next, we have informal comments, and I have no one signed up for informal comments. So we'll move on to additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. We have an ad that's been requested, and our deputy manager, Michelle Lancaster, if you'll tell us about that, because I think it's a request to go on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Helms and Commissioners. The item that I provided to you earlier today includes additional steps that are required for our disengagement from Cardinal Innovations. Your initial action in October kicked off the process for disengagement and realignment with Partners Health Management, and we are working through all the required items. This item includes a required resolution, our disengagement plan, our continuity of services plan, and statements regarding real property and financial obligations, of which we have, we have none of those for either of those items. We continue to work with Cabarrus County to align our disengagement plans, and their board is taking similar action at their meeting later today. Additionally, the Partners Board of Directors voted in a special meeting last Wednesday to agree to move Union County and Cabarrus into their service area. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I'm asking that you place that on consent today.
Okay. Any questions?
Can you speak briefly to define one?
Yes, so we are asking the secretary, there's some statutorily required time allotments, so we've already passed many of those in terms of public comment. We posted our plans, we received public comment, we kept those out for the sixty days plus thirty additional days for folks to review. We will now, our plan is to get our package to her next week after the two counties provide their supporting resolutions, working on some, completing some written documentation, and then she has ninety days to make the decision about the transition. And so we've been working in partnership with the secretary's office to see how quickly we can move that process forward, but we're hoping that we can target either the beginning of July or August for the transition at this point.
Or complete disengagement?
Correct. You're very welcome.
No further questions, I'll make a motion to add that to consent as requested.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Additionally, we received a written request on Friday to divert, to defer the vote on CZ 2020-002. And with that request, I am going to make a motion that we deny the request to pull item 23 and address it to see. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All righty. Next, we have, need a motion to approve the consent as amended.
So.
Okay. Have any discussion? All in favor? An old business, item 23 is rezoning request CZ 2020-002, courtyards at Howie Farms. Lee.
As you'll recall from the public hearing at the last meeting, this is a rezoning request along Waxaw Indian Trail Road for a age-restricted community of eighty-nine single-family homes. It's a point of access, again, off Waxaw Indian Trail Road. The overall density, gross density is just under two units per acre at 1.98. And then as far as conditions go, these are the recommended conditions if the rezoning were to be approved. And just as a reminder, the planning board did vote four to two to recommend denial of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I do know, just to point out, the applicant is here as well, in case you have any questions then.
Mr. Ray?
I'd like to adopt the consistency statement rejecting the rezoning petition CZ 2020-002 to rezon the property appearing on the tax map as parcel number 06048003 in the Sandy Ridge Township. The property referred to from R40 to R4 CZ is inconsistent with the current Union County Comprehensive Plan and deny the rezoning petition CZ 2020-02 to rezon the properties from R40 to R4 CZ.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is any discussion? Mr. Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say to EPCON, this project was an outstanding project from what I've seen. They came back and they worked with the neighboring community to change the entrance. That was one of the concerns that I had at the beginning, and they also lowered the number of homes that they had originally intended. So as for EPCON, I believe that you're a great organization, and I can understand the concern that we got today about delaying the request, dealing with the sewer uncertainty that we have in that basin. So I would say this, that we heard earlier tonight, or earlier today, this afternoon, that we are overcommitted at this time in the Twelve Mile Creek sewer plant, so I'll be voting in favor of the motion, just as we cannot meet the commitments that we have there.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Lee. Next, we have no new business, and so therefore, we look forward to the manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We certainly appreciate your time that you've given us today, starting at one o'clock for the second of three of the public works updates. We do have another meeting scheduled March the 11th at the Ag Center, beginning, I think, at eight o'clock. People will gather, eight-thirty, the meeting will start. And right now, we're looking at that meeting concluding sometime around three o'clock or thereafter. There'll be a number of items discussed at that meeting. You will be receiving updates on sewer capacity. You will be receiving updates on the status of the inter-local agreements that were sent to all the municipalities regarding water and sewer service. You will be receiving an update on short line extension program. You will be receiving a presentation from Brown and Caldwell, who's doing the master plan for the water and sewer system that day. They will be going over their methodology, what they're going to be looking at, and they'll be looking for some feedback from you at this time, on March the 11th, but they will be also spending some individual time with you to get your feedback for the planning process. Incredibly important time for the board in that process. We're also, as we've done for the past two years, providing time for the municipalities to speak directly to the board concerning plans they have in their communities, whether it, and things that they would like to see have happen, whether it's related to water, sewer, or land use planning, or transportation, or the like. It's their opportunity to come and make their wishes known about developments with, or development in things that impact their particular municipalities. So we'll finish out the day with that. March the 18th, beginning at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a joint meeting of the Union County Public Schools. March the 18th, beginning at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a joint meeting of the Union County School Board and the Board of County Commissioners. This will also take place at the Ag Center. Draft of the agenda has been sent out. And we're waiting to see if the school board has any additions they would like to add. But right now, I will tell you that on the draft, we have a budget update that the school system will be providing regarding their overall budget and current financial situation. We're also asking them to provide the board with more specific updates related to local funding of operations, personnel, operating capital. We'll be getting an update on their major capital projects and where they stand. And then if they are able to provide some kind of a projection or forecast for you, so for what they would be looking for in local funding, we'll give them the opportunity to do that as well. We will be providing them with, and you, with an update on the ad hoc committee process. The ad hoc committee has not concluded all of its work. But we want you to know exactly, as two boards together, we want you to know the progress that's been made thus far and where we stand with that. We'll be talking with them about the budget schedule. Blake and Beverly will be providing them with some updates on the projected value of a penny on the tax rate and those types of things. There may be other items that are added. But it looks like it's shaping up to be a very informative meeting. And we appreciate the Board of Education and school administration participating in that meeting. I will tell you that we've had a number, as county administration, we've had a number of correspondence with school administration over the past three to four weeks in preparation, not only for the joint meeting, but for our budget process. And last week, we had a virtual meeting. Everything seems to behave, be a virtual meeting now. But we had a virtual meeting between our county administration and budget staffs and the school administration and budget staffs last week. Very productive meeting. And we look forward to continuing those on a every other week schedule now through the end of April. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted the board to have that update and know some of what is coming in the very near future. And we look forward to those opportunities to spend time with our community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ray.
Well, I would like to acknowledge all the, my heart breaks for the grieving families who have lost members, loved ones to the COVID. I won't call names of the people because I would surely forget one of them. And then I would have put myself in a corner. But I've lost several good friends. And I just ask that we all pray for this thing to come to an end. I want to thank Dennis Joyner, who's here tonight. And, you know, nothing but good things we hear about the process over there. And I just pray that, I think the one thing that people in the county don't know is we're not getting that many vaccines. And if the number was to come higher, y'all would get it in people's arms. So, and I did speak with Deputy Manager Lancaster this morning. I asked her about the school teachers. And she said they have requested enough to do the teachers. They should know something definite Wednesday afternoon. Because I saw some news last night that we were doing it. And I just wanted to follow up. It is a good thing. But she always comes through, so I'm sure she will on this one too. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say to the towns, and I know in April, I'm excited about that meeting we're going to have in April with the towns, that tonight, you know, we heard, or this afternoon, we heard that, you know, we're at more than our commitment. So we're committed in the 12 Mile Creek Sewer Plant. We have, it's not 92 or 95. It's, if everything that comes in today comes in, then we've got more homes to be built than we have sewer capacity to handle. So I'd ask that the towns refrain from trying to encourage builders and developers to begin projects until April, when we get this figured out. We'll have a meeting in March with the towns. In April, we'll be making some major decisions in the county. And these are real dollars that people are putting forward, buying property, making plans, putting in investments. And just as the neighborhood tonight, you know, whether it's a good project or bad project, commercial or residential, if we can't make it happen because we don't have the sewer, then it would be poor planning to tell you that we could. And it could be three, four, or more years before we can make any headway on getting that fixed. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone and have a safe trip home.
Commissioner Simpson?
Just congratulations to those employees caught in the act.
I as well would like to congratulate all those that were caught in the act. But I'd also like to thank Catherine and Liz for the outstanding job y'all did in presenting and highlighting their accomplishments. And we appreciate it and look forward to future updates from you. I was impressed to see that we had so much support from their various departments. Sheriff was here and his leadership team as well, supporting his people. And that's, that's kind of demonstrates the teamwork that Union County and all our departments is, that consist of. We see that regularly. So I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for their support of their meetings like they regularly do. And thank Han for his update on utilities. And with that, I'll make, I'll make a motion for us to go into closed session. And I move the board go into closed session in accordance with GS 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions concerning the handling of the following judicial actions. Lennar Carolinas versus Union County, number 16 CVS 2654 Consolidated, and in the matter of the appeal of Lowe's Home Centers LLC in accordance with GS 143-318-11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged and/or confidential pursuant to GS 143-1810E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.